All right, we will call to order this joint planned development workshop with the city council and the planning and zoning commission for the city of Pearland on Monday, July the 19th, 2021 at six o'clock PM. I'll roll call, we have all members of the city council present with the exception of member Orlando. We do have member Cam Carr online, all other members are present in the chambers. If I can get the madam chair to call in your quorum.
Mayor Cole, all members of the planning and zoning commission are present.
Okay, so with that, moving forward in our agenda, citizens to citizens comments, we didn't have any earlier. We had none presented today, all right. So moving forward, we go introduction of the agenda and the format of the workshop. Martin, would you please introduce that?
Thank you, mayor. So first we'll have a call to order, then applicant's presentation, followed by staff report. Then we'll have opportunity for council commission and staff discussion, followed by an adjournment to this item.
All right, and so with that, I'm just going to read the purpose of the workshop and make a quick and just quick comment as we move into it. Input discussion and a request by Katie Harris, who's at the podium. LJ Engineering applicant on behalf of Judd's Food Stores, Inc., owner for a joint workshop as required by the Unified Development Code on approximately seventy point five five acres of land. Right over here off Highway thirty-five. With that, I think what we'll do is we're going to have the applicant present first, is that right, Martin? We'll have the applicant present first, then we'll have staff presentation if any. We'll kick it to Planning and Zoning Commission members, and then finally to to council. I want to remind everyone, Planning and Zoning Commission does have a meeting immediately following this, and I think they have a robust agenda. So so with that, I want to I want to get them on their way as soon as possible so they're not too far into the night. You're welcome. And so my my goal would be to keep this workshop forty-five to minutes to an hour or so. And I'll just say this on the on the front end of this before Katie gets up to to present. At the end of the day, right, wrong, or indifferent, land plan uses and everything else are are one issue. Separate issue is, are we ready to rezone this area from industrial to a different use? Because it will be setting a precedent in the in the area. We we have other areas in the immediate area that we have rezoned. And most recently, we we had one just a couple of weeks ago that we we did a final rezoning on. So that seems to be will be the question at heart. We can get into details of a PUD and or or plan development all we want, but I think the the crux to the matter is, are we ready to rezone the area? And so with that, Katie, I'll turn it over to you and just for all the legal stuff, name and address for the record, and any speaker, please do the same. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Katie Harris with LJA Engineering, located at thirty-six hundred West Sam Houston Parkway South, Suite six hundred, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero four two. I am here on behalf of DR Horton to discuss a potential rezoning of a tract located in an industrial zoning district called the Alexandra Tract. It's approximately seventy-one acres. There we go. So as you can see on the screen is a preliminary land plan showing a mixture of housing products ranging from townhomes all the way to sixty-fives or sixty-five by one-twenty's with several different products. We have the developer here who who will be able to provide more information about that if you have specific questions. We also are proposing a one acre rec site with linear parks throughout the project. That would lead to an amenitized detention pond on along the western boundary. If you are familiar with the project Bakers Landing, this project would be very similar to that and would have a similar monument and similar type products as currently exist. Here are some options for the amenitized lake. This is not for sure happening. This was just a general idea of what could be on site and providing amenities to the residents. As I mentioned, we are also providing linear parks that would have trails for people to run or walk or bike. And they would be able to access the rec center all the way to the amenitized detention pond. So it's connected throughout for all of the residents. And then also on the rec site, there is an opportunity for playgrounds and other activities for children and adults alike. And that's it. Pretty straightforward. I think Mohammed will go into more detail about the current and existing zoning. The main purpose of this evening is to determine if this is something that you would be interested in seeing in Pearland and if we are comfortable moving forward with a PD or PUD changing the zoning from industrial to single-family residential. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We have the developer, Ernie, here, as well as our engineer, Clayton.
Excellent, and so I'm sure here in just a minute, we may have plenty of questions. So with that, let's turn to the staff report. And Martin, if I heard correctly, Mohammed's going to give the report?
No, sir, I will be giving.
You will, okay.
So not to repeat information, but this is to discuss the seventy acre tract. That current tract is all zoned M-two, and as you can see, from just south of the west side of Old Town coming down to the intersection of Bailey and Thirty-five and then extending all the way south to the city limit line. This property is all M-two. So this is a this side of the road is very heavily geared toward industrial development. And the future land use plan reflects that. So this, while we have seen rezonings in the surrounding vicinity with the development of the French Quarter and the rezoning on Dixie Farm, those weren't necessarily as heavily as a keystone to this industrial undeveloped industrial land. As discussed, they're having a proposal of R-three, R-four, and townhome with recreation and trails amenities. This was the concept plan that they provided to the staff. And one of the discussion points that I'd like to bring up is the outcome of whether or not the property gets rezoned. So a lot of what's stated on this slide is that if the property becomes single-family residential, what are the buffers required both internally to their property and externally to the surrounding properties? So taking a thirty-foot buffer for all examples, you'd have one point seven acres of land or about seven percent of the property to the north that would be that would have to be dedicated to a buffer as the zoning for the land that's being proposed would go to single-family residential. Of course, that could be dropped down to a twenty-five-foot buffer with a six-foot masonry wall, but it's still a substantial piece of the property that gets dedicated because the land changes types from industrial as it exists today to single-family residential. As those properties exist as industrial land, there would be a ten-foot wide dedication, which is about a half acre internal to the site. Going to the southern property, this has more of an impact because it's a skinnier piece of land that is very wide or very long, but is fairly narrow. So that's about twelve percent of the property that is then taken up by that thirty-foot buffer. Going back to the Unified Development Code and talking about the criteria necessary for establishment of a plan development, staff finds that this does not meet the criteria for creation of a new plan development for any of the reasons that are listed within the Unified Development Code. Next, I'd like to discuss some of the planning points that have led us from the comprehensive plan throughout our planning history for this area over the past few years. With adoption of the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, we had two land use strategies, both within the residential and industrial sites that were diametrically opposed to one another, but being residential and industrial. You want to keep your residential sites away from industrial and you want to keep your industrial sites away from residential. Following with the Comprehensive Plan, it laid out a strategy to do a deeper dive into Highway Thirty-five and to discuss what redevelopment of that corridor looked like. So the Pearland Economic Development Corporation sought out a consultant to analyze this area, and they came back in 2016 with the Thirty-five Redevelopment Plan. This was a market-based study that called for three point three point one million square feet of new industrial space within the study area, not just Thirty-five, but within the the overall plan over the next ten years. Within the Thirty-five Redevelopment Plan, this area shown on the right side screen was catalyst area number five, which was called out as the largest remaining continuous owner parcel with the highest potential for a business park to develop. And as you can see, the green area involves the majority of the requested site. Going back or continuing on the Thirty-five Redevelopment Plan, one of the barriers to seeing the industrial land develop or be developed as industrial, what was specifically called out as the rezoning of the property for residential. It was basically seen that residential could come in, but it would be a barrier to implementing the industrial growth that the plan called for. One of the things that I'd like to call out on this image is the fact that we have a large industrial development north of Bailey in the Flowworks Development. I believe it has a different name now, but most people know it as the Flowworks Development. Moving on to 2019, again, Pearland Economic Development worked on the Pearland Prosperity Plan, which called had two initiatives, both calling for the implementation of the Thirty-five Redevelopment Plan and for prioritizing sites along Thirty-five for industrial development. And last, I'll leave us with the strategic priorities that city council recently adopted, which would be to promote high-quality dense development that adds the highest possible value. And this isn't about whether or not this is a high-quality development or a dense development. It's whether the location is correct for this type of development. With that, I will turn it back to you, mayor.
Thank you, Martin. So with that, I want to turn, I guess, first to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So madam chair, if you would talk with your members and bring forth questions, comments. This may be where we have questions for the applicant and whatnot.
Commissioner Fortes, questions or comments?
You want me to go first? Okay.
I'm I'm I have a feeling you have questions and comments. That's why I chose you first.
You got him sitting right there between the city attorney and Martin, so.
This is pretty unfair right there.
Exactly.
I I I guess I've been looking at this land or or land between Thirty-five and the railroad tracks since 2005 when I was first brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There has not been a lot of activity. I know we we had a lot of council pressure in 2005, six, seven, eight, around there to to maintain the M-one, M-two status. Just haven't seen a lot developed in all that time. And I'm saying all that time, I mean, it's sixteen years since this study. I I wish I would have remembered what date the study was that said there's going to be three hundred thousand square feet of this and that. But it gave it ten years. Where are we at now and how much, you know, has happened in that timeframe? I I guess that combined with my understanding is Dixie Farm Road is is not a truck route. You can't take eighteen-wheelers up and down Dixie Farm. What type of industrial can we sell there? And and what type of master plan will really occur there with with ownership, different ownerships? So I I guess I'd be more apt to lean for this change in zoning. I think we saw the beginning of it with, and I know it was a small building that was already built on a challenged piece of land, but the council supermajority over planning and zoning's decision. And I think that was rightfully so. I think each one of you had a reason to do it, and and we at P and Z had such a smaller, such a small vision and instead of instruction and guidelines than you all have. You got guys got the big picture. So when I looked at this one, I thought, well, this similar to north of Dixie Farm and east of Thirty-five. I thought this could be the same thing. And if Dixie Farm gets punched through, are we really thinking at some point that this is going to maintain and and be be, you know, M-one and M-two forever? I think there's better places in the city. I think with the Beltway Eight coming through, fantastic job's been done by the EDC and by the city to bring industrial to to the Kirby District and other areas. And I I just think that's where it needs to be. I think the rest of Pearland should be considered residential. And the last thing I'll leave you with, my company, the company I worked for in the nineties, looked at the land along Thirty-five that was zoned industrial at that time. And the comment on the way back to our location was with that high school there, there is no way in heck. It was word like that. No way in heck, we're going to put a truck driver with a load of hazardous goods on a road that could potentially have an impact with a with a high schooler leaving the parking lot at two o'clock that's not thinking about safety. They're thinking about getting home, getting to their job, getting wherever. And we don't want to be on Channel Thirteen News. That was the comment. And it's it's always stuck with me that that's that's what people that own businesses think. So kind of is what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dansby?
All right. I served on PEDC when we did the market study on this. Particular piece and and other areas and and also still serve on the Pearland Prosperity Plan. So I I would say I I do see the concern of the the trucks that are there on Thirty-five, but, you know, those already exist somewhat. The the risk to me as a as a PEDC former member and prosperity plan member going forward is that we continue to rezone commercial product into residential and pass along the tax implication implications to our homeowners. This is seventy acres that could be a well-used, well-taxed. The number one taxing entity within Pearland ISD is that property we mentioned across the street from Pearland ISD. So it may still be the case, it was the case a number of years ago. So, you know, I I I feel, you know, Kirby is is good, but they're they're the kind of products that don't fit over there. And we were told many, many years ago on PEDC and continue to move forward that Thirty-five is geared towards industrial. Anything south of five eighteen is where we're supposed to have pushed those businesses that were commercial, light, industrial, M-one, M-two, whatever it is. That's the opportunity to to put someone that has a commercial business, a tax-paying entity that is not a house in that area. I have no problem with growing Pearland with good homes, good good townhouses. DR Horton and has done a fantastic job over there in the Bakers Landing and and the and the organization LJA has done a great job. They're good partners with the city. I'm not worried about that at all. I'm not worried that the product's going to be bad. A little concerned about the the two entrances. That's a fire marshal question, you know, can you get trucks in and out? There's no back entrance to this. I think that's kind of part of the question and concern we all have required through the city. So I'm not sure on that, but I I wouldn't. If we keep taking away industrial opportunities or we don't have shovel-ready properties, we're going to we're going to limit ourselves to houses only, and that tax base is going to be paid by us and the the residents that live here. You know, Shadow Creek was the, you know, number one development. It's plateaued, so, you know, the growth in Pearland has plateaued. The schools are full to the level that they're going to be, and I think they're only about seventy-five or eighty percent capacity, maybe a little more. So, I mean, you know, there's not any big developments coming. They're going south down two eighty-eight and six. So, you know, it's going to be pocket development, and I get that. But we're going to lose commercial product if we continue to put houses next to where we have industrial opportunities. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Boswell?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendricks?
Okay, I'm a little torn on this question because I understand the need for business parks. I just worked on one and it all the lots sold super fast. So I think there is a demand out there for it. I just don't know why they're not finding Pearland. Maybe it's something that Pearland just needs to market a little more. I'm not sure. But then every time I drive past this area, I always think, I wonder. every time I drive past this area, I always think, I wonder when a neighborhood's going to go in because it's across from Pearland High School. I think it's a great location, but I have to kind of agree that I don't want to take away business park land zoning or industrial park zoning away because I think that we need a place for businesses to go and different types of businesses. And so that people feel like they can live and work close and not have to travel far. And it has utilities nearby. Sure, we can say maybe they'll just go down 288 to do a business park, but there's not a lot of utilities unless you're in a mud. And it's not likely that an industrial park will always be able to get into a mud versus LJA creating a mud in a neighborhood. But that's just my thoughts. I feel a little bit torn. I think they would put in a very good product, and those are really nice homes. But a part of me doesn't want to take away that business potential. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Earls?
Good evening. It's kind of tough to not reiterate what was already said. So it's about location, location, not the product. My concern is if we put this product in that location, will it be a deterrent or a hindrance? Or will it prosper and invite more residential? And we have residential. I think we need to, the M1 is needed, I believe. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yeah, the, you know, Henry brought up a good, a good point about it being close to the high school. In a business that's looking to go in something like this, and trucks hauling in and out of there, going up and down 35, you know, a lot of business owners are going to look at that and sit there and say they don't want that liability. And I don't know if we're shooting ourselves in our foot because we're betting on something that, that we've been hoping that will come for years and years, and something that we've got that we know we can put on the ground and, and generate revenue off of. I'm torn with it. You know, if, if I was living in Bakers Landing or one of them, I'm not sure that I'd want industrial all around me. You know, over there where the lakes at across from the high school, all over in there, you know, I know we got to have industrial, but then you look and see the industrial that's, that's just south of them there. Looks like there's a concrete plant down at the very end of the road, and a batch, it looks like a batch plant down there. And then you have a, a bunch of tin buildings and stuff down through there. And I've never gone out there and looked at it to see what type of optic it is as far as, you know, an industrial area, if it's, if it's unsightly or not. But that was one of the things, if they did put houses in there, I know they're going to have a buffer and such, but how are they going to, to sit there and coexist with these industrial, industrial places that are already there? And because I don't mind them coming in and doing something like this, but on the other hand, I don't think the industrial that is already there needs the foot to bill to do anything to hide what they've got and have had. So that means that that's going to fall on that developer to, to go in there and, and do something to, to, to hide all that, that, for lack of a better word, eyesore. But, you know, another thing that bothers me, we talk about the 18-wheelers and stuff, you know, where are they going to come from and get in there? I mean, you're talking about Dixie Farm Road. Well, you can't come down Dixie Farm Road. It's not made for it. 35 might be made for it, but do we really want 35 coming down through the middle of our, our city? Now, Makawha, I don't know when they're going to get Makawha built. And I'm not sure where Makawha comes out down there. You know, at one time I heard that that was an option. But, you know, I, I don't know. Like, I kind of feel like Commissioner Hendricks. I'm a little bit torn on it, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to them putting in a subdivision. I'd rather have money in the, you know, what, what is it? A bird in the bush is better than whatever, two in the hand, whatever.
One in the hand is better than two in the bush.
There you go. And, but, but that's my thoughts on it.
Sure. Could I, I'll just clarify real quickly that we did change the truck routes a couple of years ago and added Dixie Farm Road to the truck route. So I just wanted to clarify that for, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Eisenberg, Industrial Drive, that's where you're talking about. Just imagine industrial, and that's what it looks like. I mean, it is, just in a nutshell, it's an industrial park. It's been there for quite a few, quite a few years. So if you haven't been out there, just take a look. It's, it's, it's got a mixed bag of, of what's in there. It's got some buildings that look really nice. It's got some other ones that are a little bit, a little bit later. Madam Chair?
I'm not going to belabor the points. I agree with Commissioner Fortes and Commissioner Eisenberg both that I, there's already residential down there, and it's right across from the high school. And I don't have a problem with this. I think it's, it's been years waiting for something to be built there, industrial. It hasn't happened. And this is a, something they, they want to do, and it's sure revenue. So I, I think it's, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
All right. Before we move to council and their comments, I would say this, as a mayoral candidate, I talked about economic development. That was actually, you know, one of my strategies in the, in the Pear Plan. So under economic development, I talked about taking a look at various areas in our city, doing a deeper dive. That's the word I always mentioned when I was out running. And what that, what that meant was, just like we had done coming out of the market crash of 2008 with, with Lower Kirby, taking a deeper dive in that particular area, doing a market study, which drove a land plan, which drove zoning, you know, for that particular area. We, we needed to look at other areas of town that were similar. 35 was one that I mentioned often. You have North 35 up by the Beltway and a couple of areas in between that are probably prime for today for much smaller industrial business park type development. And, and then you, you get from the high school south. And I haven't added up the acreage that's out there, but it's plus or minus 800 acres from the, from the high school all the way south to the Alvin Line. And as you, as you move south, especially, I guess, south of Industrial Drive, just, just mentioned, you get to that Dixie Farm Road area, you get into some areas that are challenged for residential because you've got some real environmentally challenged areas with, that's part of the oil field and those types of things. And so what I talked about back in those days, running, like I said, was we probably need to do an end-up study in market. And I can see this area from the high school south, you know, being looked at differently. Not all of it industrial, and certainly not all of it residential, but, but a, a mixed use, a mixed bag, if you will, up and down the line. So I'm really glad that the, the D.R. Horton and the developers are here. It's, it's forcing this issue, forcing us to talk about this sooner rather than later. And I really appreciate you guys letting us have kind of a Sunday after church family gathering here where we just kind of talk through it. Because that's, I think that's what's going to, what's ultimately going to get us there. So yeah, I, I don't want to, I, I live in the immediate area. I live in Town Lake Estates. Less industrial in my immediate area personally is, is good, but it's not about me and my neighborhood. It, it ultimately, it's, it's what's best for that area. I mean, we re-zoned directly south of us for the French Quarter. That's a residential feel. We had a rezoning two weeks ago, or a week ago finalized right there on Dixie Farm Road. And we talked about that. And while members of the Planning and Zoning Commission are here, I want to, I want to state this to you guys in the room. I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago in the public hearing that we had on that particular rezoning. You guys have a couple of documents that you have to govern, UDC, as well as future land use plan when it comes to rezoning a property. You know, that rezoning didn't fit in what you have to govern. And so the expectation level was that you denied that request. That was exactly what your job calls to do. And so ultimately, rezoning of that property fell to the council. Council rezoned it. And in, and in so doing, potentially opened up that east side of 35 from the French Quarter all the way down to Dixie Farm Road up for rezoning. And, and so we're already seeing, it, it sounds like the market is speaking, the market is talking. And I think there will need to be some further study of the area of how we, how we look at that. So I just kind of wanted to set the table with, with, with that, turn it over to council for their comments and concerns. We'll start with Member Owens.
I appreciate that. Yeah, you know, from the PEDC study and what have you on that, I don't see, you know, we're not comparing what we got on the west side of town and Kirby as compared to this over here. And, you know, the current that we have in the zoning is industrial and warehouse. So the PEDC, from what I'm thinking from our side of business, we're not looking at any of the warehouses coming in at that area. It doesn't bring what we really want to bring in. But, you know, the only thing that I see is for the fire department on the access, on the back access, if we have commercial coming in or what have you, I would want the same property and the same amount of land. We may have the same problem on there. But I think, you know, a lot of the concern that we have from the PEDC, actually on there, and also from the planning group, you know, and you're right, Dixie Farm Road was changed. It's, but, you know, getting over that property, you'd still have to go out Dixie Farm Road and come back in on 35 to the south or going north in order to get on that property. This thing that bothers me has already been mentioned on there on the hazardous material, which we have right across from the house school, right across from where the mayor's house is out at Town Lake, the residents we have out there. And then not knowing right now what's going to happen on 35, that's a concern too. You know, if they come through and they go ahead and do this, you're going to put another two lanes. So it'll be a six lane divided highway coming through there. And, and so we don't know how much other land is going to be taken in, if that's the case, on doing that. But we're, having said that, you know, we're adding a lot to, like on 35, as being the only truck passage that we have for big trucks to come in on that. And as the mayor will tell you, we've talked to TexDOT about several things here a week or so ago, and, and talking about that. And, you know, I reiterated Pearland is getting to be nothing but a cut-through city, going to Alvin, Manville, and what have you. I mean, we got 2351 Dixie Farm Road, 1128, 288, Cullen, I mean, and the list just continues to go on. And so we're dividing, continuing to buy, you know, divide the city as we go through. As far as I'm concerned, you know, I would support coming in and putting this out there. I'd rather see this across from the highway from the school over there, rather than some type of commercial or industrial going into that particular area. And I think, you know, as far as I know, I don't know, PEDC may want to chime in, but I don't know anybody that's been out in the last four or five years saying, hey, we want to buy X number of acres out there. So I think, you know, from, from mayor, from your standpoint, I think it's time for us to take a look at the industrial property out there and what we want to do and where we're going to divide and stop it, where we're going to go with it. If anybody takes that 70 acres from industrial, I think, you know, the fire department has the same thing on the back access to it as they do on this property here on that. So, but, you know, I just think this is not what we're really looking for on this. And you can't put this out with the same thing that we have on the west side of Kirby. I mean, those are very, you know, sizable projects over there. The wages of the number of people coming in, wages are very high wages at the people that are working over there. And when you come in and the plan or zoning that we have now, I mean, you're talking about warehouses. So, I mean, you know, as being the capability of putting warehouses out there, you know, how many people do you come in if we help on this anyway with EDC? You know, how many people does it take to run a warehouse, you know, out there? And it may be a public storage type house, I guess. I don't know in that area. But having gone through that and sitting up here for quite a few years, I, you know, I think that, that really the industrial side, we need to really take a stronger look at that and make some changes, whatever we need to do on that to, to come in and make those changes where we can definitely use maybe some of the area to it. But I don't think this plays into that part of this development. I'd say it'd probably be a, a good development. And I don't know, maybe if anybody's ever asked the PEDC, or actually not the PEDC, but the Pearland School District, do they have any concern about that of opening this up to hazardous material if it goes into industrial, going through the Pearland High School area? And I think, Commissioner, you mentioned a good, good point on that. If I was going to put in out there, I wouldn't want to have trucks coming through when you have the high school kids getting out and the vehicles leaving that particular area. So I think, you know, number one, I don't have a problem with the development going in. Number two, I think it's time that we just come back and speak about the industrial side out there and see what we want to do with that and how we're going to divide it up. That's all I have, Mayor.
Supporter of the project?
Member Little?
Yeah, a lot of good points have been raised by Planning and Zoning and Alsmann Owens. I guess it comes down to we want to hold on to it the way it's currently zoned with a potential for more tax revenue. But then it's just a waiting game. We, we have no idea how long it can be. The projections are 3.1 million square feet in the next 10 years. But that's just a projection. That's someone's opinion. And we know what about, how opinions are. Or we can go with the development, the residential development. There's some pros there. There's also some cons. But I, I wouldn't stand against it. Let's see what the rest of council has to say.
Very good. Member Hernandez?
Mayor, my, I guess my biggest concern is it's no secret that I'm friends with a lot of senior citizens in this town. And a lot of people at Ativa have asked me about potentially adding a signal there where they come out. And so I kind of saw this as, you know, meeting that and creating, you know, a scenario where we'd have potentially 400 more cars or something hitting that road right there. But if there's a potential to somehow create a secondary access to this, and I wouldn't really have any issues with it. I, I think that there were great points brought forward by our commissioners on planning and zoning that, you know, we've got, we've had plans for this area to develop for a long time, and it just hasn't for whatever reason. I would love to see, you know, some dense commercial, you know, industrial something come in here, you know, but it just hasn't happened. So I don't want to just hold people hostage if they've got land they want to develop. You know, we should do everything in our power to try to make it work and make it work, not just, you know, for the people who own the land, but obviously for the city as well. So, I mean, we can talk through all of those things. Generally, though, that was my biggest concern is just the addition of putting cars onto 35 at that particular point in the road. But outside of that, I've got no major, major concerns.
Can, can the staff put their plan, their block plan up? Just that way we have it to talk from? There you go. Thank you. Member Carbone?
Yeah, I mean, P&amp;Z has hit it on, on both sides. And it's, I think everybody here would like to see more industrial, but when and if, does it ever come? You know, just, just looking at kind of some, some rough calculations. And I think we get quite a bit of value on the ground and comparing it up to the Flowworks. I think it's going to, and Matt may be able to opine, but I think there's going to be a lot of value on the ground just with the, the numbers of the residential homes. So does it solve the, are we taking the burden off of residential? No, but we're spreading it out over additional value. So, I mean, it does, it does help from, from a tax rate standpoint. So, yeah, I, I guess if I had to cast a vote tonight, I'd be So yeah, I, I guess if I had to cast a vote tonight, I'd be slightly in, in favor of it, but I don't know. In the mix, I think works. The townhomes, as we saw Baker's Landing, were successful.
Did well.
And it, it does get some, some denser development. I guess a question for staff on, on the buffers, if you can go back to those slides. So we've got, if we're looking at the, the northern property line, that's, I guess, still currently M2. I, I guess there's a chance that some of that maybe absent the corner goes, goes residential or, or how do we see the rest of this laying out?
So the buffer considerations were based off of the existing zoning and this northern parcel has a unique shape to it. So that's where it was to their detriment to have that buffer be enacted for that site.
I mean, and same with the, to the south, right?
Correct. And it's more of a detriment to that property due to the narrow width of the, of the parcel.
I mean, I, I really feel for the property owner to the south. I mean, that's, what, what are they gonna, what, how does that even even develop? It's almost like that's a de facto buffer between industrial and residential development.
It would take a very clever developer to fully utilize that site.
I wonder if there's any way to, to wrap that in. I don't even know if they want to sell, but if not, they're gonna be backed into a corner. Maybe he's got the answer.
Clever developer. There we go.
Hello, my name's Clayton Weisum with L G Engineering, address 3600 West, West Belt, Sam Houston Parkway South, Suite 600, Houston, Texas 777042. And to address those two parcels to the south, they're actually owned by the city. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. That's city owned property.
We're, we're saying no.
Let me pull up the map.
Just to clarify that, the, they're in the property records system incorrectly, Pretoria County. The, the vast majority of that property is owned by the, is owned by a private property owner. And then if you go to the back of the property, I guess to the west, the city acquired property there from that property owner, right there at the back of the property.
So Darren, the back half ish?
It's not, no, it's actually just a strip. Uh, uh, yeah, it's for the ditch.
It's just the ditch.
Yeah. So that, that property, it says the city of Pearland, but it is not the city of Pearland.
Okay. So whoever owns this front piece probably owns the rest of it?
Yes, sir.
We have a strip on there Darren, on there for, we go across on the elevated section, we're gonna put the next section of the roadway in.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
The next section of the roadway going across there on that overpass, we have not done the south side and I think it's on the plan, Robert, to have that added to there, haven't we?
Councilman Owen, that project's in design right now. It's part of the 2019 bond program to turn that into four lanes.
Yeah, there might be that strip across there as a part of that loans to the city for the right of way expansion to go across.
The E D C funded the bridge and the drainage improvements in this area so we could promote industrial development.
I think we, I think we own the right of way for the, the grade separation on Bailey.
I do think that there are, there are tools that we can put in place. I mean, zone changes are different because we're zoning the land straight specifically for a use. If we got into a P D that gives us a little, a few more tools where we have a base zoning at the type of land plan that they have would only, would kind of dictate that we'd have to do a P D, otherwise we'd have to do a townhome base zoning and let them do the larger lots. So I think we're probably in P D, in a, in a P D mentality already. With that, we could force them to, to do a couple of things to either offset the buffer. Either we give, we put the buffer on their part of the property, we require them to do masonry walls across our north and south property line. We could also potentially see if this developer could request variances and, and absorb the cost for the variances, the adjacent property owners, have those put in place first. And then, and then we don't zone change and those of those variances are put in place. So there's no negative impact to the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, I just, I think we're through here. I want to go to Member Kamkar. I know he's online.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, P and Z board, great to be with you guys. I do have a couple of quick thoughts. Just for the record, Ernie Loeb and I know each other professionally, but have never worked together, just so the public can know, there's no conflicts here. I don't have any comments on the quality of the product. I think D R Horton's reputation speaks for itself. I do want to reiterate what Member Dansby said. He's absolutely right. The biggest taxpayer in pale and I S D is across the street. This will improve the tax rule versus ag, but not to the extent that some better use comes along. What I would also tell you as a development professional, one, one point of access is not great quality of life. The other items I think we would have to consider, being next to a railroad is not encouraged as a developer, usually ever. It becomes a nuisance. It's difficult. People know they're moving towards that, but it doesn't take the nuisance away. In being next to an industrial user, sometimes using hazardous materials, things of that nature, it is not something that is enviable. So I, I do have those concerns around there. I would tell you, I'm going to defer my vote to where the P and Z is. I think they're doing an excellent job, but I think all the concerns that the P and Z has brought up need to be addressed. And, and we'll also have to add in that we are in an environment or a drainage area that is challenged and not having seen those plans and understanding where their off-site water is gonna go. We need to understand that, I think, before moving forward. And Mayor, lastly, to be supportive of your comments, I think, I think you're right, we do need to reevaluate this area and the area south of a high school. But I do think we should do this not in a spot scenario, but in a more holistic, everybody sit down together and let's have that discussion. I, I would be uncomfortable to change the zoning for here and not be willing to do that in a more holistic point of view. And so I'm gonna be supportive right now of where the staff is, not to grant the zoning change and to where it sounds like the majority of the, the P and Z is, which is to have questions that need to be answered, but at this time, I'm probably not there.
Okay, if the staff could put the development plan back up real quick. So a, a couple of things, obviously this doesn't meet necessarily the, the Fire Marshal's directive, but there are two points of access on this plan. They, they did put that in here. I, I think if you also had a point of access in that, I think it's A O five, moving north to that tract, a lot of times for future development, then you've, you've, you've met the Perifair plan that shows something that goes out to, to Bailey. So I think that gets met from that standpoint. Obviously, this is a block plan, a lot to go into engineering and design work, ultimately meeting all the requirements of our city. Just looking at this, I, I had more people speaking in favor on the planning and zoning. We had quite a few that just said they need more information, had more speaking for than against, and on city council, I had more that would generally say they're, they're in favor of at least looking further on this than against. I think the, to, to answer the question, yes, I think this moves this whole area in a different direction. I want the, the developers to know, if you come back and we continue this dialogue, clearly if we ultimately were to rezone this area, you know, just, I'm, I'm way down the line here, something to the north could come in, that's M2. It's currently zoned M2 around you. And so something could come in immediately. They don't have to come to us, they don't have to come to planning and zoning, there's not a public hearing, and so the residents of your neighborhood would have zero say in what happens around them. I just, I want to make sure that the, that the developers and ultimately somebody sitting in a, in a, a mo, a, a model home who's selling homes is aware that around them is zoned M2 and it could happen tomorrow. And until there's a different applicant moving to the north and various things to the south and we change zoning, that would be the case. Our economic development director did bring up a great point. Bailey was constructed on the economic development corporation's nickel and it was done so to open this immediate area up for industrial development. So I want to make sure that that, I mean, I, I'm, I see Matt back there, I want to make sure that his, his comments were on the record, that this was done by the E D C for that reason, you know, many years ago, but it was done for that particular reason. Ernie, did you have a, a comment or a, I guess, a, a response to one of the questions?
I did, thank you. Ernie Loeb, I'm the director of land for D R Horton, address is 64, 6744 Horton Vista, Rive, Richmond, Texas. What I'd like to tell council and the commission now is gonna possibly change things and maybe we even ask to, to regroup. Late on Thursday, I received a signed letter of intent from the Burns family and they have the 35 acres to the north and adjacent to this site up to Bailey. I did not want to pull this from this agenda, this workshop, I wanted to keep this going. I am in the process of getting that piece under contract, but they've agreed to our terms. So I would like to tell the city that the market is telling you something. These sellers, land sellers have told me that the industrial business park users want to go to the Beltway and they want the Beltway and they probably want to be within a mile of the Beltway. And so yes, there's an attractiveness or an in-city business park, but the market is telling you that they don't want to pay the price and they don't like the access. So right now, what we'd be looking at is 105 acres of your industrial land that could be changed and rezoned to single family. That would take care of the access issues that you talked about and it would create a really nice master planned community. I don't have any type of graphics to show you because this all just happened late last week. I have been in negotiations with the Burns estate and they finally agreed, as I said last week. So really, if you think about the issues that staff and planning and zoning brought forward, I, I completely understand, you know, that single family housing costs the city money to take care of, of those residents in the streets and the police and the fire and garbage and all the services. But I would tell you that the market is telling you that industrial, I guess, from what Henry had said, the last 10 years, 15 years, does not want to go here. Looking to the future, it could, but I can tell you the Beltway is a very, very stiff competitor to what you have in the city. So I'd like to share all this information with you. As I said, I don't have it under contract, but it's real. And if you'd like, I would be happy to come back and show you another plan that incorporates the 35 acres. And then you could take all of this into consideration.
Yeah, Ernie, that's kind of where I was gonna lean was, it's late breaking news and I appreciate you sharing that. Obviously, in context with this piece, if we had the whole piece in context, I think that helps. I think it helps us understand what's going on here. And again, I, I don't know that you guys got clear direction on, on where we're headed. I just, you know, kept a couple of tick marks just so we kind of understand where the ball is moving. But I think it would be worthy, staff of having an, and I don't know if you, assuming you get that under contract in the next 30 days, you know, of having a, a conversation, you know, shortly thereafter to see that plan and, and further this discussion as we move it on. I'll just say this, in the, in the meantime, the fact that you got Judd's place with Jay under contract is no small feat. I'll, I'll say that. As a landowner, getting them to, to the table is, is no small feat. So I appreciate that. Do we have any other questions and comments? If not, I'm gonna adjourn this.
Mayor, I would just, I would say, just kind of dovetailing what was said, we do need to, the, it's very obvious that this is not, this is not an industrial area. And I think that, you know, us trying to continue to put that square peg in that round hole, as much as we've invested in it, as much as it's disappointing, we put a lot of money into the ground, it's not gonna happen, in my opinion. And that, I have industrial clients, I've, I had them toward the site, they've all said it's not viable for an industrial product. Dixie Farm's not a good path, 35's not a good path, it's not close enough to the airport, it's not close enough to the Beltway. There's plenty of land along the Beltway, along 288, particularly north of 288, closer to 59, which is where they want to be. So it, the reality for us is that the longer we hold off on preventing this to be developed from something that may, may want to be naturally, the more it's gonna be a detriment to us as a city, in my opinion. But I do believe we probably need to hold off on, on moving forward with anything until we get some final say on what's gonna happen with the, the tract to the north. Because I think that there would be, in my opinion, there should be a lot of conditions put on a particular P D to protect that tract to the north. And I don't want to put those conditions in place until we know finally whether we need them or not.
Good comments. Mayor Proton, final comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I guess since we're gonna have a follow-up from the developer, Matt, if we could also just, I just wanted to get a semblance of, since you mentioned E D C dollars went into Bailey, just kind of get some feedback on you. Doesn't have to be tonight, but just as a follow-up, just to kind of see what your response would be to that. I'd like to just kind of see the E D C perspective. Thank you.
All right. With that, I know, I wanted to keep it to about an hour, we're a minute over. So we're gonna call this workshop for, between the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council adjourned at 7:01.